I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Norby?
Here.
Councilmember Woods?
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Mayor Monge?
Here. Thank you very much. Get a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
Some moved.
So moved. Councilmember Schwer?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Norby. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda. Item A, July 15th workshop and city council meeting minutes. Item B, August 4th, 2025, emergency city council meeting minutes. Item C, general claims of $5,39,016.56. Item D, HRA claims of $14,780.61. Item E, special event permit for the fall roundup parade. Item F, special event permit for the Legion corn feed. Item G, billing permit report for July of 2025. Item H, resolution accepting donations for July of 2025. Item I, approved proposed ordinance amending Chapter 112 Bingo and charitable gambling. Item J, approved North St. Paul Firefighters Relief Association opting to join the statewide volunteer firefighter plan. And item K, approved the 2544 19th Avenue Drainage and Utilities.
Thank you. Anybody like to pull anything at this time? If not, can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Woods. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Six thirty-six, open to the public. John Schmoll.
Good evening, and I would ask that you watch your, uh, switch on your mic. The other John doesn't have his hearing aids tonight.
No.
Anyway, um, this is the, a excerpt transcript from the June 17th meeting, uh, council meeting. Started at 48 minutes and 43 seconds, uh, and the city manager was speaking. So, uh, society right now, um, we didn't unfortunately have a cybersecurity incident here in the last couple of days. It's unbelievable how many phishing scams there are out there now and that, um, and they're not just general stuff. I mean, they're getting specific about you knowing, mentioning things. I got one last week. You know Jenny and I are working on updating the personnel policy. It said the policy update, but, uh, it said from the HR department, so I mean, it was obvious. But I mean, they're knowing things that you currently are doing and involved in, which makes it easy to be able to click on something. And that it was one of our newer officers, and unfortunately, we're going through the process that you needs to be reported to the state within three days. Just going through the whole process, finding out, uh, no locking down the computers and making sure that we prevent any future problems. This was the only notification until the emergency meeting in August, on August 4th. There was a data breach. It was said on June 17th. So, and the next thing that I ran into, I'm getting up in the morning, I'm listening to NPR on Wednesday, August 6th. And there was something said, North St. Paul, so whoa, wake up. And, uh, on whatever the, uh, the people who were talking or who they were, uh, a spokesperson said the problem started when an officer opened an email about a week ago. Now, I don't have a printed transcript of that, but that's what my brain remembers. So did we have two data breaches? Did we have it? Or is there going to be any information in the little newspaper that we get, uh, every week that we sign up for? Sounds a little strange to me. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Dan?
That, Bronk?
Bronk?
He left because we...
Didn't want to talk, then?
Yeah.
He didn't have to. Carrie Blis?
Welcome.
I'm Carrie Blis. I live at 2887 Lake Boulevard in North St. Paul. First of all, I want to thank city staff for responding to my questions, which sometimes are really simple and I just can't figure it out. Or my concerns. They were always patient with me and very professional, and I really appreciate that. I want to thank Dan Winnick, uh, our finance guy, for presenting all sides of the city's financial condition. The good, bad, the otherwise. I really appreciate hearing all sides of those things. And I want to thank the council members, like each of you, seriously, for meeting the challenges that the city faces with openness, for seeking facts, for being attentive to wise counsel, for listening to all the citizens, not just the loudest ones. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. That's it for the public.
All right, move on to city business action items and recommendations. Uh, first item up is the Home Occupation Zoning Ordinance text amendment. And where is Ken?
Ken's right here.
There he is, in the audience. Community Development Director.
Thank you.
Ken Robbins.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Before you this evening is a proposed zoning ordinance text amendment related to home occupations in North St. Paul. Those are home-based businesses in another term. We are, as a staff, uh, in conjunction with the Plank Commission, recommending, uh, several changes to the ordinance that will clarify the types of home occupations or activities the city will allow, uh, for a property owner to conduct from their residential property. The standards and operating, uh, conditions for having a home, uh, home occupation. And there included in the ordinance are 14 types of uses or activities the city will not allow as a home occupation. I'll walk through some of the highlights for you as we get into it. This started as a request to the Plank Commission back in 2023, and I picked up on it reading, uh, some of the materials when I was hired back in April and May. Discussed it first with the Plank Commission on June 20, June 5th of 2025. They were supportive of proceeding with updating the ordinance and had some suggestions for the ordinance. I brought that back to them on July 9th, updated ordinance with some changes, uh, that they were recommending and looking for in the ordinance. And they had a couple more changes at that meeting. And, uh, we had the, and that was with the public hearing, I should say, at that time. And at that, at that time, they recommended approval with a motion, uh, to the city council to approve the changes that you'll see this evening. So, home occupations are mentioned in three different sections of the zoning ordinance. And the cleanest way, in my opinion, to make sure their newest and best language are, is and are will be incorporated in the ordinance is to repeal and replace all three of those sections rather than doing a bunch of strikeouts and underlines and all that stuff. Which is a way to do it. So that's part one. Second part is the actual ordinance itself. The existing ordinance for home occupations has two levels of home, uh, homework, home occupations, level ones and level twos. The level ones required, uh, some involvement with the city, uh, with a lease of staff review. And the current level twos require, would require a city council approval. The proposed ordinance now has three levels of home occupations. The new level ones are those intended for professionals working from home, such as an accountant or doing computer repair or answering telephones as a call center, where they don't have a home, or they don't have customers visiting, they don't have deliveries visiting. If you drove by that house, you would never know someone is working there. No impact on the neighbors. We're adding that into the code because the current code doesn't say that that is really a permitted thing in North St. Paul. I don't think anybody can object to that, but to be clear, we wanted to add that into the code to make it perfectly clear that if you're doing those kind of activities, great, don't need any city approval, go ahead and do it. Because of adding that new level one, the former level ones are now become what we're calling level twos. And those are activities and things that might have an impact on a neighbor. Maybe there's a couple of deliveries. Maybe they want to put out a sign or something, but not major impacts. And those in the ordinance can be approved by city staff. The former level twos, which are the ones that could have the most impact on neighbors, are now level three. The uses have not really changed in level twos and threes. They're just how they're labeled is a little bit different. As part of the amendment, then, we, uh, we, again, staff and Plank Commission working together, made some changes to, again, clarify what can be done, what cannot be done, what are some of the rules of the road for home occupations. So we're, the ordinance adds language to level ones stating they are subject to all performance standards of the code. Uh, we've added language in, uh, in the code about an appeal process of a homeowner or home occupation business owner doesn't like maybe a staff interpretation of the code. We've removed pet grooming and pet care services from the prohibited list because they are already listed in our MU1 and MU2 zoning districts. We're adding some standards in the general provisions about if you want to grow food outside, retail sales, and permitted hours of operations for all home occupations. And then there are several uses and activities that are now listed in the proposed ordinance that will be prohibited. I'll get into those. So the ordinance itself, again, the new, uh, new level ones are those, again, with little or no impact on neighbors. The level twos will be those that were the level one types of businesses. And then the level threes are the ones that, again, could have most impact. So level twos, for example, in the ordinance are, uh, dressmakers and tailors, a barber shop or a beauty shop, uh, professional offices where with legal, accounting, or insurance. And these are, again, where you have customers coming to the home. Tutoring, musical, dance, voice instructors, and cottage food producers, which would be subject to the registration, uh, required by the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. Again, limited or hopefully small, minimal impact on neighbors. Level three home occupations in the ordinance are those that were level two before. And these will require city council approval of an interim use permit. Again, in both of these sections, these are examples that we say may include, but are not strictly limited to. And then for level three, we say small engine repair, small equipment repair, building trades, and heating, plumbing, electrical, or air conditioning services. And those are, the last one's intended for the contractor that brings home their truck or their van. And maybe they have a home office, maybe they don't, but they have that vehicle at their home. Maybe they have tools and that kind of thing. So some of the general provisions that all home occupations will be subject to in this ordinance, uh, that they, for example, they shall not result in incompatibility or disturbance to the surrounding residential uses. They must be clearly incidental and secondary to the residential use of the property. Not change the residential character of the property and not occupy more than 25% of the gross floor area. Uh, there shall be no exterior alterations to the structure and no permanent alterations that are not customarily found in a residence. The, uh, operator shall not use equipment in the home occupation that will create electrical interference for surrounding properties. And there shall be no exterior storage visible from the public street of equipment, products, or materials. Again, most, we're hoping most activities will be in a garage or in the home, home itself. The hours of operation we're proposing will be from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Uh, and then, again, we, there's 14 items that are listed that are not allowed. I'll not read all of them, but here's some of the highlights. Motor vehicle body repair and painting, motor vehicle sales, uh, the practice of medical, dental, or chiropractic, uh, treatments or those, uh, businesses. Not allowed to be a veterinarian, veterinarian in your home. Tattoo and body art businesses would not be allowed. All cannabis-related businesses are not allowed. Can't run a restaurant from your home. And you can't run a payday, payday loan agency or a currency exchange from the home. Again, we're trying to cover all the bases or all the potentials where somebody might say, well, it's not in the code, I must be allowed to do it. Well, we're trying to cover as many of those as possible. We know that there will be something that comes up that we haven't thought of, but we'll deal with that if we need to. We're also proposing that all existing non-conforming home occupations are allowed to, or lawfully allow, allowed to exist and, uh, may continue as a non-conforming use. Clarify that in the code. And then the code also goes on to say that the city can inspect properties with the home occupation. Violations will be handled as a violation of the zoning code. And all the regulations, or, excuse me, all, uh, home occupations shall comply with the provisions of this section and all applicable local, state, and federal laws, as well as Section 98, 18 about nuisances that affect the peace and safety. That is a very, hopefully, clear and high-level summary of the proposed ordinance. And with that, I will stop and take questions.
Okay, number one, um, you've got the hours of 8:00 to 9:00 PM. If you have a service of a lawn mowing service that's working out of his garage, what are you going to do with, uh, residents that are working at night, sleeping during the day?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if, if, uh, first of all, I think we'd be reacting on a complaint basis.
Right.
If they can, if they're repairing equipment in a garage or in a home, and they're not seen and not heard, then hopefully...
Then we're fine.
Right. If we get a complaint, then we have to deal with it. But if, if no one knows, then...
Right. That's why I'm just worried because I used to work overnights or work overnight, sleep during the day. And you don't get that good sleep if you've got a lot of noise. So I'm just making sure that everyone's aware of that. If they do have an operation like this, that there could be noise and they're going to, and then we're out, deal with it.
And there is some good language, and I want to commend Ken. Um, he brought forth great, um, uh, discussion from the planning community. And there, there are some languages about, um, undue, um, undue effects about your neighbors and things like that that I believe, um, would potentially cover us in those situations.
Anything else? Always appreciate the good work the Planning Commission does. Those guys are really on top of it. They're a good group.
Yes, they are. And, and I guess, to be clear, Mr. Mayor, I didn't, I don't know if I actually gave the recommendation. So it's staff's recommendation based on the ordinance and the Plank Commission work that the council adopt the ordinance, including your packet. It's, I don't know the exact number, and that ordinance approves the zoning ordinance text amendment to repeal and replace the existing city code language related to home occupations in North St. Paul.
Okay. Any questions? Can I get a motion?
Some moved.
So moved. Councilmember Schwer?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Norby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, next item up on, uh, city business. Next item up on the city business action items and recommendation is, uh, council direction on the Community Multicultural Outreach Center feasibility study and grant funding. This was in the last council meeting, but it was decided to table it since we didn't have full council at that time. So I will start it over again. Um, so the background on this was, uh, at the city council workshop on June 17th, 2025. EAPC, the architect and engineering firm, um, that we hired to do, uh, feasibility study, presented the report. And, uh, then the interim report for the Community Multicultural Outreach Center feasibility study contained an estimated cost of remedial work in excess of $3 million, more than the grant funding awarded to the city. Uh, since that time, I've received comments from council members in the public on whether the city should continue with the feasibility study and the potential acceptance of the grants. Based on this feedback and current financial needs of the city, uh, we believe it's prudent to seek formal approval by the city council regarding continuance of the feasibility study and potential acceptance of opportunity to modify the grants. So in the paperwork here, there's a recommendation for the approval of the resolution, which I'll read in just a minute. And there's also the attachment of the presentation that EAPC had come to council and presented. So the resolution in front of you is, uh, to discontinue the Community Multicultural Outreach Center feasibility study and decline current federal and state funding, uh, grant funding. So I'll read that out because there's a little more to it. Whereas the city council workshop held on June 17th, 2025, EAPC Architects and Engineering presented an interim report for the Community Multicultural Outreach Center feasibility study. Whereas the interim report identified the estimated remedial cost would exceed the federal, state, and grant funding awarded to the city by more than $3 million. Whereas following the presentation, members of the city council and the public have expressed concerns regarding whether the city should proceed with the feasibility study and accept the associated grant funding. Whereas in light of this feedback and considering the city's current and future financial needs and priorities, yeah, it's in the city's, could be in the city's best interest to discontinue the feasibility study and decline the federal and state grant, uh, funding as awarded. Now, now there be resolved that the city council and the city of North St. Paul is follows. The contract with EAPC Architect and Engineering and Engineers for the Community Multicultural Outreach Center feasibility study should be, shall be terminated pursuant to the contract. The city shall decline both federal and state grant funds and award, as awarded for the current project. City manager is authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to carry out termination of the contract and the cancellation of grant funds, including notification to all relevant agencies and to explore the reallocation of the grant funds. This resolution so should take effect immediately upon adoption. That is how the resolution reads. I guess I could add more information on that. So I did talk to the, uh, House Capital Investment Committee Chair, and they said that, uh, what can be done is if you reject the, the grant, then you can then turn around, um, and as the next, uh, request, to request it towards a reallocation of a different project. So we're leaving that open, and that would be council to decide whether or not it's a road reconstruction project or a water tower or what have you, um, to be able to use that money towards a different project. So that would be the direction, and that was the resolution that I read. So looking for a motion.
Could you expand a little bit about what the next steps or how the next steps look like if this resolution passes?
Sure. So what we would do is, um, we've already made contact with a local legislator that said that they would back, um, canceling that and then reallocating it towards another project. So we would work with that, uh, legislator to get that paperwork in place for when the new legislative session comes into, um, into play. But, and with that, we would be looking at the, what we'd have to take care of at the community center as well, which we would, uh, talk to the library about their current lease. We have, um, some IT equipment in there that would need to be, um, moved to across the street to the Public Works Building. And we would need to address the, uh, we have a generator there. That generator was placed there when it was a community center, so it runs both the community center and the Public Works Building at the same time. So we would have to move that across the street and then eventually down the road. If it was to be demoed, then we would look into that as well. Um, but in the meantime, we would have to have a meeting to find out, um, gather ideas, bring it back to council, maybe a workshop. And you guys would have to discuss potential, um, ways you could reallocate the funds for whatever you felt. Just answer your question.
And that potential reallocation would have to go before, um, Leon Lilly, correct, and get his endorsement?
And he has said that he would endorse that, um, but it would have to go back to the, uh, House Capital Investment Committee, yes, for them to decide. And this is not a guarantee, I might add. And this is not a guarantee, I might add. So when you turn that back and ask for that reallocation, they don't have to. But in talking to the chair, she did say that this was a cash bond, or a cash grant as opposed to a bonding grant, which is much easier to work with and move around. So we had two people that, from there, that were already, seemed to back us on that decision to help us move it towards something else, but there's no guarantee.
And the alternative project has to be one single project and it has to be within the city, correct?
Correct. And it has to be solely for the city. It's not meant to do like a joint project with a neighboring city or another agency of sorts, so, yes.
I guess, just to be clear, a yea is that you want to stop the study and return the money, and a nay is against doing that.
And ask for reallocation. I just add that too, yeah.
I guess, I'll, I'll just, more of a statement. I will say from the get-go that I've been very, I've, you know, moving here, my kids went to the community center. I've been a big proponent of the community center. Having seen the EAPC study and basically the hole that it would put, put the city in, you know, having us have to pay that $3 million on top of, you know, where the grant is a big hole to put the city in. And it's a big ask of current and future generations of North St. Paul residents to, to comply with. So, yeah, I guess, I will, I would vote yea on this.
Sorry, yeah, one other quick, quick question. In the reallocation process, are you foreseeing meetings open to the public to get their feedback on what they would potentially like this to be reallocated to?
That would be council's option if you wanted to welcome that.
And I also have lived here a long time. I did have a membership at the, at the community center back in the, in the late 90s, early 2000s. It was a fun experience, but what happens when you possibly lose a job or, or your income drops off, what's the first thing you do is you cut out your entertainment. And with the amount of money that the city would have to pay to re-re renovate this building is not probably in the best interest of our community right now because we've got other priorities. And I think, I think in the best, it would be a nay for me. What, nay, you said, right?
Yea is voting for it.
Yeah.
Oh, for, oh, yay, okay, yeah, yay.
Can I ask for a motion then, please?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Woods?
Second.
Second. Councilmember McKenzie. All those in favor, say yea.
Yea.
All those against?
Nay.
All right. Reports from city manager and departments. From our staff meeting today, we, we discussed, we have a blood drive coming up on September 4th. That's going to be open to the public and for our city staff who want to partake. I'll briefly touch on the cyber incident that we had. We are still in the process of, I apologize, we're still in the process of dealing with the insurance company and the firm, law firm, and the IT forensic team that went in and found these. We know that they were able to breach 23 emails. So it was very minimal. We're looking to see what information was in those emails to see if we have to send out letters to those people if it was private information. So could have been much worse, they caught it fast. And we've got a pretty good handle on it right now.
Just one event, correct?
One event, correct. And did not spread from here and did not come from St. Paul, which seemed to be the So Electric was away, it did team training. They also been working on the road reconstruction and burying the high voltage lines up there and secondaries. Community Development is, been working with the plans for Cowan School Project for their addition next year. And also working on some updates for finalizing subdivision updates and looking into an ordinance for e-bikes and scooters that we see buzzing around town. Communications, we had to reschedule a couple of events. Well, actually, one event, the, we, the car show shut down early due to the rain, and then Saturday, we had a movie night that was also canceled due to the rain, but it's been rescheduled for next Thursday. We also have a project coming up for a new give back food shelf event, which looking for volunteers to go down there on Saturday, September 27th, from 10:00 to 12:00, to help clean up sites down there, and we'll have some pizza for you. HR is working with finance, they've been working on, we have new software coming in for the Paycom system, which we're looking forward to. It looks like it's going to be a pretty good step up from what we have now. So that's in the process, can probably take a little while yet. PDE, they do have, coming up on November 2nd, a pancake breakfast at the VFW for the Police Foundation fundraiser. All the new, new recruits are doing well. They have a full department again now, thankfully, and been a while since we had that, so that's really good. Chief is happy. Public Works has been busy with a road reconstruction project, working with anything that comes up with that. Their summer help is already finishing up for the year. And they're doing some work back on Casey Lake, they removed a couple of old ball fields that were not used very often at all, so they have been taken out. Fire has their annual hose testing today for 10,000 feet of hose. That takes a while. Got the new engine back, well, we had it delivered, and then we found just a few things that needed some correcting on it, and that was sent there, they corrected, and we now have it back, so that's good. And they do have water rescue training coming up tomorrow down at Silver Lake. Might get loud, Ramsey County might bring their airboat, so, yeah. That's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, reports from commission, council committees.
I don't have anything on mine. End, Parks and Rec will meet here at 6:30 on the 27th.
Thank you very much.
Our EDA will meet on the 9th of September coming up.
All right, thank you.
The Arts and Culture Commission had our meeting last week, I believe, beginning, yeah, I think, last week? Question mark. But I will say that one of our projects, the Take Your Own Snowy Home project, we were getting, or we sold those, they're still for sale at the, at City Hall here, as well as you could pick them up on the National Night Out. So a lot of people did that. Also, the electrical box at Veterans Park is now wrapped, so I encourage everybody to head over there and take a look at it. It looks really, it looks awesome, so, thank you.
The planning commission, we voted on the topic of their last discussion today, so I appreciate that. One of the new discussions for the planning commission is changing to some code violations. I believe there's going to be an open house coming up soon, or not, an open to the public meeting for that soon, and then it will be brought before the council.
Councilmember, excuse me, were you referring to some of the code changes about encroachments and-
Yes, yes.
Yes, that's another ordinance we're working on. For example, the code is silent about if someone wants to add a handicap accessible ramp in the front of their home. Should that be allowed, should it not be allowed? There's several things like that. We're rolling into one big ordinance, and hopefully we'll have that ready for you in September.
So great things to look forward to from the planning commission.
Great.
I'd like to add one thing. Our student-built house is now complete, so I'll be contacting the college, and they'll be setting up an open house for out there, and then the kids will come back there, and I should say, the young adults come back there, and they look at their handiwork, and they're pretty proud of that. So they, they usually do a really good job, so looking forward to that. That'll be, we'll post that soon.
Great. Any general business?
Yeah. I had the pleasure to attend the police swearing-in, which was pretty exciting. Ray did a nice job, nice event. Fire Department, thank you for letting us host inside there, not us, I should say the police department, excuse me. We have a great team of people on, it's, I'm pretty excited for what's in our future and how well-staffed we are. Over the past couple of weeks, we've had some pretty decent storms. I got to thank the Public Works Department for getting out there and cleaning up these places pretty quickly. I know there was a tree on the power line, so thanks, can't thank John, he's not here, but he got back there and took it down from my house. So thank you for all of your guys' hard work in regards to that.
I also attended the police swearing-in, and it was quite an event. Nice to see all our young officers get the badges put on them, and I'm glad that we're at a full staff also.
Thank you.
I'll just take the opportunity to thank Chief Mallinger and his team for letting me ride along on National Night Out, so, thank you.
One quick thing, I was talking to a resident the other day, and they brought up a question, and then I wasn't able to quickly find the answer or easily find the answer, so I'm going to ask the city and the city staff to possibly put this out. The question came upon the PFAS lawsuit that was settled recently, and they were wondering if any areas of North St. Paul were included in that, and if we got any part of that settlement. So if we could find out that information and possibly put that out where the residents could easily find, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Great. Myself, I was also at the swearing-in, it was a very powerful ceremony. It was, it was, it was a great group, and it was very, very meaningful for all of us. Also, I was going to mention, my wife sold a house in North St. Paul, she's a realtor, and the couple, the young lady called in to get her utility switched and everything done, and she said what a nice experience she had and how friendly they were. So that was a comment she got back from that, so that was very nice as well. Because I know that, I've been talking to a few, and we, of course, we get some, some hot heads that call into the city, there, there's a couple where you got pictures up in there where, you know, they, they've been not too, too nice, so just to be able to hear from, from Carrie, and as well as this one, you know, the hard work that our staff does, and, and how important it is that we treat each other well, because, you know, everybody tries, especially when it comes to code enforcement, different rules, regulations. They don't make them, the people that sit up here make them, they're the ones that have to go enforce them. So that's where, you know, I was talking to one, and I said, yeah, well, you know, that's the thing, it's, it's us, then we have to decide, you know, we're the ones that pass this, and if there's some things that, that need to be changed, or there's things that don't make sense, or there's things like that, it's, it's not the people out there doing the code enforcement, it's the, it's the city as well as the, as the council and the mayor. So just wanted to make sure people have grace for everybody that's out there working hard.
If that's it, if nothing else, ask for a German.
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Woods?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Swears, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. September 2nd is our next meeting, enjoy the rest of the summer.
Thank you.